Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for June 12, 2018. To begin with this evening, Board, may we have a motion, please, for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then also, may we have a motion to approve the minutes of our May 22 education meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Adrienne, seconded by Karen. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we move into one of the highlights of the year. Tonight's business meeting also includes our approval of tenure recommendations for a number of our administrators, teachers, and teacher assistants, teaching aides, and it's just a wonderful evening and we welcome everybody here for that. So we have a couple of items of official business and then we'll move to aspects of presentation of certificates. So, may we please, Board, have a motion for approval of the administrator recommendations of Betsy Balling and Sarah Jacob?
So moved.
Second.
And also the approval of the teacher recommendations as listed and the teaching assistant recommendations as listed on the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
A bunch of them moved.
Just pick a name. I got it.
And I would say, Dr. McGowan, anything but your comment on all these folks as we present them individually, so.
Other than I would just say pause for one second and enjoy the moment.
Any further discussion among the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. So then official question is taken care of. We will now move to presentation of our certificates and Julie and I will go to the podium and Dr. McGowan, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I would just ask each of the tenure recipients, when your name is called, if you can head up to the podium to stand next to Mark and Julie and they have a certificate to present to you and we get to embarrass you for a few seconds by talking about how wonderful you are. We'll start with Carol Sant Brick, please. Carol's receiving tenure in the teacher assistant tenure area. She has a bachelor's degree in communications from Fredonia State and a bachelor's degree in graphic design from RIT. Level three teaching assistant certification. She was a teacher aide in 2011, 2012, and then became a teaching assistant beginning in 2012 and now is receiving tenure and is currently in that position. Matt Tappin says she's an incredible hard worker who's an advocate for students, the ones that she works with each day and all of those throughout the building. She's very adept at providing support for both the individuals and the classroom teachers that she supports. Her goal with each student is to provide scaffolds for each of them in hopes of developing independence. She's a great asset to Council Rock. She's deserving of receiving tenure for her work with students, her incredible professional attributes, her work with her colleagues, and her many gifts that she brings to the building. We thank Carol for her work and congratulate her on her tenure appointment. Actually, Betsy has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from SUNY Genesee with a master's in school counseling from the University of Rochester and her certificate of advanced studies in educational leadership from SUNY Brockport. Her certifications are as a school district leader, a school building leader, and a school counselor. She has been an assistant principal at 12 Corners Middle School since 2014, following her work at Wilson Magnet Schools as school counselor and then the Pittsburgh Central School District also as a school counselor. The bulk of Betsy's experience in education, as mentioned, was previously as a school counselor in Pittsburgh at Sutherland and Mendon High Schools. The governor commuted her sentence and brought her to Brighton. Sorry, that's not part of it. She became a department leader at Sutherland in 2012 and prior to her work in Pittsburgh, she was a school counselor at Wilson Magnet in the Rochester City School District. She also taught preschool for one year at Mount Hope Family Center and coached soccer at Pittsburgh and the University of Rochester. Mr. Thomas writes that he's been very impressed with Betsy's work ethic, willingness to learn, and her drive to perform at a consistently high level. She's an extremely dedicated and caring educator. She thoughtfully builds and nurtures relationships with staff and students, making meaningful and positive contributions to their school experience. She is an excellent role model, highly collaborative and professional in her interactions with everyone that she meets. At the middle school, she oversees special education, counseling, teaching assistance, and family and consumer sciences. She's been instrumental in working with Mrs. Rabidu, our school psychologist and special education teachers, on creating the least restrictive learning environment for our students and aiding in the transition to and from the middle school. She chairs our school wellness committee. She's been core at implementing the high school's BST model at the middle school and she's also on the district-wide wellness committee, adding to the positive culture of the middle school. In a relatively short time, she's immersed herself in everything Brighton, from her caring attention of individual students, all the way to her district-level leadership roles. She has made countless important contributions and for that and all of her hard work, we congratulate Betsy on her tenure appointment. Sarah has a bachelor's degree in political science from Nazareth College, a master's in adolescent education, social studies from St. John Fisher, and her certificate of advanced studies in educational leadership from the University of Rochester. Professional certificates in social studies, seven through 12, school district leader and school building leader. She was a social studies teacher at Fairport High School before going to Pittsburgh Mendon as a social studies teacher and again being paroled to the Brighton Central School District from Pittsburgh. Never gets old. At least for me. She's a committed educator who has a gift for working with teenagers and their parents. Her unique combination of experiences include teaching students with special needs, teaching social studies at the high school level, working as social studies standards leader, and that has been combined with her leadership and personal skills to give her a wide range of strengths. She's truly an asset to Brighton High School and the Brighton Central School District, exemplifies our motto of caring for excellence in her daily work with kids, parents, and staff. One of her greatest accomplishments, in addition to successfully overseeing all student activities, AP exams, and various departments, is Sarah's contribution to our Brighton support team. She's helped enhance the process by introducing a model where teachers serve on and contribute to the BST teams. Dr. Hall says there are many proficient, dedicated leaders in education. There are also leaders who, because of their commitment to education and students, must be considered outstanding. She is an outstanding leader, colleague, and friend, and for that and her many accomplishments, we recognize Sarah with her tenure appointment. And all kidding aside, what I enjoy most is how much Pittsburgh misses both of those two fine educators. Julie has a bachelor's degree in social work from Nazareth and a master's in social work from University of Buffalo. She has a permanent certificate as a school social worker. She began her career at Edison Tech as a school social worker, Dr. Freddie Thomas High, All City High School, and Vanguard High School before coming to French Road Elementary School in 2015. She's also worked quite a bit in the summertime for us as well. She's truly an amazing educator. Her positivity and enthusiasm to students, families, and staff shines through in all the work that she does. She's talented, professional, collaborative, and has an extremely kind and easy-to-love personality. Dr. Rio says she's had the pleasure of watching Julie work in many different circumstances, both students and colleagues, this year, and can say that without a doubt, she has a gift of making people feel at ease, all while working to help them learn and grow. She is always one of the first people to help problem solve and think outside of the box to help them meet the needs of all students. Deanna Spagnola, assistant principal at French Road, says that she's an asset, a visible presence in the building, and on any instructional team, she's developed trusting relationships with staff, parents, and students. She can provide suggestions and strategies at a moment's notice and flexibility to adjust to meet the needs of an individual student or situation. She's truly an asset to her students and to French Road. Her high expectations, willingness to go above and beyond, and her positive attitude are what make her such a great fit for French Road and for Brighton. For that and her many accomplishments, we recognize her tenure appointment this evening. Ellie has a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from Lynchburg College and a master's in education from Nazareth. Permanent certification in pre-K, kindergarten in grades one through six, and special education. She was a special education teacher in the Wayne Finger Lakes BOCES as well as then for two different periods of time, from 1997 to 2000 and 2008 to 2014, before coming to Council Rock in 2014, first as a special education teacher, and has served now as a first, second grade teacher since 2015. Ellie's compassionate, kind, thoughtful, flexible, and a learner. She's enthusiastic about her students and her classroom. Each day she enters school with a smile and ready to take on whatever adventure awaits her and her students. She has worked hard to plan and co-plan with several different staff members in order to provide the best for her students. Above all else, Ellie is one of the most flexible staff members that Mr. Tappin says he's had the pleasure to hire recently. She has a can-do attitude for her students and is willing and eager to work with all types of students, no matter the challenge. She's an advocate for all students, but in particular those of special needs. Her enthusiasm can be heard throughout the hallways with her booming voice that just makes you want to join in the learning that is happening in her classroom. She completes her probationary period demonstrating an excellence in teaching and professionalism. Her understanding of the primary classroom and students, desire to grow and learn in her pedagogy, commitment to her students and families, passion for own learning, professionalism, and apparently booming voice are all part of this excellence. She's most deserving of tenure and we congratulate her on her appointment. Alyssa has a bachelor's degree in math adolescence from SUNY Fredonia and a master's in education and human development from the College of Brockport. She has a professional certification in math, seven through 12. Her experience includes being a substitute teacher in the Hilton Central School District before coming here as a long-term substitute at Brighton High School, and then a part-time math teacher at the high school, then becoming full-time in 2016 at Brighton High School. Observations in her math classes and informal interactions with Alyssa and meetings show her to be professional, competent, passionate, caring, enthusiastic, and extremely collaborative according to Dr. Hall's recommendation. She has a tremendous gift for being reflective of her practice and is always looking for new and innovative ways to meet the needs of her students. She goes above and beyond the call of duty to develop positive relationships with her students and with their parents. She regularly contacts home counselors and/or administrators when she has questions, concerns, or just wants to praise a student for a job well done. I'm sure many high school parents appreciate that. Alyssa frequently has students working with her in the morning, during the day, and after school. Assistant principal at the high school, Matt Como noted the following. Alyssa is an outstanding math teacher. She is a leader in the department for the core classes of Algebra I and Geometry. She's flexible with students and works hard to successfully meet all the learning needs and styles in her classroom. She's truly an asset to her students, to the math department, and to Brighton High School. Dr. Hall is proud to make the recommendation and for all of her accomplishments and hard work, we recognize her at this tenure appointment. Sarah has a bachelor's degree in music education from Mansfield University, a master's in music education from Ithaca College, and her PhD in music education from Ohio State University. Her permanent certificate is in music and she has many different experiences, beginning with Northwood Elementary School in Hilton, Neil Armstrong Elementary School in Rochester, back to Northwood Elementary School also in Hilton, Nazareth Schools, Canandaigua Elementary School, Ohio State University, Columbus International School in Ohio, and then 12 Corners Middle School, beginning in 2015. In the three years that Mr. Thomas and Dr. Leener have worked with Sarah, they have found her to be student-centered, passionate, reflective, and an active collaborator. She has a strong ability to engage all students and her commitment to helping all students access music in their lives and achieve at high levels makes her a deserving candidate for tenure appointment. She regularly plans her lessons and rehearsals with the needs of individual students in mind. This is with many students in front of her. And thinks flexibly to allow students to find an accessible entry point and personalized pathway to help them meet their learning objectives. In each of Dr. Leener's classroom observations, he's been impressed with her ability to observe students, give targeted feedback on their performance, and celebrate their success in moving towards lesson goals. Accomplishing this level of success for students, in order to accomplish this level of success, she chooses a repertoire for her students that includes parts at multiple skill levels so that every student ends up with a role that will stretch them just outside their comfort zone and help them meet with success while learning new skills. She's been an excellent addition to the staff and the music department and the entire school community. She's helped identify innovative ways to engage and support children in the music program. She works well with colleagues to support the district mission and vision. For this and her many accomplishments as a music educator, we congratulate her on her Suzanne has a bachelor's degree in elementary K through six from the University of Vermont and her master's in communication disorders, also from the University of Vermont. Her certifications are in speech and hearing handicapped and elementary grades K through six. Her experience is as a speech-language therapist beginning in 2004 till 2018. I should point out that Suzanne was part-time for many of those years. It did not take her this long to get tenure. She's a pretty incredible professional who only recently became full-time. She demonstrates her kind and caring personality in all that she does. She's incredibly collaborative and always has a positive approach to working with her students and colleagues. They look forward to their time working with Suzanne and she has a great way of incorporating what she knows about them as individuals into her work. She's regularly involved in the FRES student support services team and the RTI team and her contributions to conversations are always student-centered. She's a proactive problem solver. Tom Hall noted the following. She provides a safe, warm, nurturing, and positive learning environment for her students. She consistently provides constructive feedback to students in a non-threatening manner. Her friendly and helpful approach fosters willingness by students to participate in their learning and ask questions freely and openly. She's committed to excellence and expects a great deal from her students. Assistant principal at FRES, Deanna Spagnola, shared the following. Suzanne is such a reflective practitioner infusing research-based best practice into an individual session or assisting a team in how to support a youngster in the classroom or in the community. She engages in discussions to better improve the process and procedure to ensure students receive the strongest support in the least restrictive setting. Parents and staff seek Suzanne's input as a resource for strategies they can immediately implement. Dr. Rio says she's enjoyed working with Suzanne this year. She's an asset to her students, staff, and the entire Brighton community. I concur and am so excited that she's receiving this tenure appointment. Lindsay has a bachelor's degree in mathematics, adolescent certification from SUNY Genesee, and her certification is in mathematics, seven through 12. Her experience includes being a long-term substitute in the Grease Arcadia High School before joining the Arondacoit staff at Arondacoit High School and then joining Brighton High School, beginning first in 2014, and then continuing full-time then in 2016. Lindsay has a tremendous gift for being reflective of her practice and is always looking for new and innovative ways to meet the needs of her students. She goes above and beyond the call of duty to develop positive relationships with her students and their parents. She frequently has students with her in the morning, during the day, and after school. She attends numerous student events and activities after school in the evening and usually with other math colleagues as well. Matt Como, assistant principal at the high school, says she's an outgoing and extremely positive math teacher. She works effectively with every student, making sure they have every opportunity to learn the material and demonstrate what they know. Lindsay has been an excellent role model and helper to new teachers in the department. She shares all of her knowledge and plans freely and even invites new teachers to sit in and watch her class every day. Lindsay has also taken on the challenge of teaching AP computer science principles. A new course at Brighton High School this year, offering the experience of taking an AP course to students who might not otherwise take an AP course. I just want to back up and make a point. First of all, in every one of these recommendations, people have talked about individuality. I want to repeat, Lindsay is teaching a brand-new AP course to students this year who otherwise might not likely take an AP course. They weren't students that would have previously been identified, created a brand-new course for them. I've truly enjoyed my visits to Lindsay's classroom, Mr. Como and Dr. Hall mentioned, as well as their conversations about teaching and learning. She's truly an asset to her students, the math department, and Brighton High School. One-time Brighton High School math student, Peter McGowan, also said she was really great and enjoyed having her. For that and many other reasons, I'm very proud to be acknowledging her tenure appointment Lori has her bachelor's degree in music education from SUNY Fredonia, her master's degree in education from Nazareth, her permanent certificate in music as well. Her experience includes time at the Dake Junior High School, Bay Trail Middle School, Iroquois Middle School, Pittsburgh Mendon High School, Thornell Road Elementary School, a substitute teacher throughout the county. She also worked in Gates Chilene and Allen Creek Elementary School before we stole another one from Pittsburgh, and she came to us in 2015. Lori has been teaching in the music department at French Road. We've been impressed with her thoughtful approach to sharing her passion for music with the children at French Road. Her classroom is student-centered, active, and above all, her self-described happy place. Her classroom is indeed joyous. Every time administrators have walked into her room, smiling students greet them, exuding enthusiasm for music. They're excited to show everyone what they are learning. She achieves this special classroom environment through thoughtful planning based on her deep understanding about what each of her children need in order to be successful. In addition to her general music classes, Lori leads the fifth-grade chorus at FRES. This involves organizing over 100 students for early morning rehearsals and she manages to match the students' enthusiasm and lead them to achieve great success as a group. Attending many of her concerts, you will quickly observe the deep affection she has for her students. In addition, parents regularly share with me their appreciation for the high standard she holds for her students and the endless support that she provides for all children. I would join them as a parent who said the same thing and give you Charlie's commentary who enjoyed her a great deal. Not that my kids are the only ones that provide this feedback, but I join those parents in saying that she's an experienced, outstanding educator. She doesn't rest on her laurels for her many accomplishments and wonderful way with children. We recognize her at this tenure appointment. Zach has a bachelor's degree in history from SUNY Brockport and childhood literacy, a master's degree in childhood literacy, also from SUNY Brockport. He has certifications in childhood, grades one through six; students with disabilities, grades one through six. He began as a long-term sub at French Road Elementary School in 2014 and then continued in his probationary assignment in 2016, again at French Road. Every day Zach works to make his third-grade classroom an inclusive environment that values each individual student, their strengths, and their individuality. The students work together throughout all the classroom instruction and routines as a team. Zach's students strive to meet the high expectations he has for them in all that they do. These high academic expectations go hand-in-hand with his expectations for the FRES star qualities. The students in his class show kindness, caring to each other just like a family would and just like Zach models for them each day. He brings his love for music, the arts and environment into his classrooms and beyond. Would not be surprising to find Zach playing his drums at a school-wide concert or extending the work of our Zero Waste Initiative into his classroom and the lives of his kids. All of these qualities make Zach an exceptional and valued educator in the FRES community. Assistant principal at FRES, Deanna Spagnola, shared that he's a supportive team member and a colleague. He actively listens to consider all viewpoints and always has what is best for an individual student in mind. Our administrators have truly enjoyed visiting Zach's classroom and having conversations about teaching and learning. He has high expectations for all of his students and colleagues at Brighton will continue to be an outstanding member of the FRES team. We're proud and honored to recognize him at the tenure appointment this evening. We're proud and honored to recognize him at the tenure appointment this evening. Eric has a bachelor's degree in economics from Syracuse University and master's also in economics from Syracuse University. He has his professional certification in social studies, seven through twelve. He was a long-term substitute at East High School in 2013, a social studies teacher then part-time in 2014 at Brighton High School before assuming this probationary role in 2015 at Brighton High School as a social studies teacher. Eric is incredibly caring, enthusiastic, talented, professional, and collaborative. He is a tremendous gift for successfully working with all kinds of learners and goes out of his way to develop positive relationships with his students and their parents. Eric has been actively involved with students in the specialized AIM program, goal program, and in the regular classroom. He's currently teaching super economics and regents economics courses. So in other words, if you hear that, all levels from the most advanced to students needing a more direct and focused approach. Eric works tirelessly so that all students feel success. He's transformed a traditional lecture-based course into a student-centered classroom. Students are engaged in the content being studied and are provided with opportunities to think about the content with each other during practical scenarios that kids find to be fun and exciting. He's an active member of Curriculum Council where he regularly shares his ideas and collaborates with colleagues. He's a highly respected member of the council because of his thoughtful insights and genuine and honest approach to discussing and dissecting issues. He has taken positive qualities such as these and used them in his new role as the summer school principal here at Brighton. It will be his second year of managing this program and we couldn't be more proud of his role there as well. He's truly an asset to his students, the social studies department, and to Brighton High School, an emerging leader who we are proud to recognize tonight with a tenure appointment. Great job Eric.
And a classmate to many of our students, or our own children, which can't possibly be right somehow.
You're absolutely right. Laura has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Wheaton College and a TESL master's degree from Nazareth College. She has her ESSL certification as well as nursery, kindergarten, and grades one through six. She's often the first face that a new student coming to us with very little English gets to see, and boy, are they lucky. She is kind, loving, and supportive of these new English learners. Imagine starting your school experience knowing no English and coming into school and being greeted by Laura. She gets to know them quickly and becomes a very safe person for them as they gain confidence and language skills. She's masterful at planning for students in order to maximize their learning. She makes great connections to their interests and helps students transfer skills they've learned with her in isolation back into the classroom. She's incredibly collaborative. She shares her expertise and knowledge with the other adults she works with throughout the day. In addition, she makes efforts to create the essential connection between home for families of her students. She's kind, creative, intelligent, and just a wonderful teacher. She has also taken on many leadership roles over the past three years. She's taken the lead in integrating technology with her students, capitalizing on the possibilities an iPad can offer to provide experiences and vocabulary opportunities. She completes her probationary period demonstrating excellence in teaching and leadership. Her understanding of ENL students, her own desire to grow and learn in her pedagogy, and her commitment to her students and families are all part of this excellence. For that and the wonderful caring role she plays in her lives, we recognize her tonight with a tenure appointment. Justine has her bachelor's degree in English from St. John Fisher and her master's in education from Nazareth College. Her experience, I'm sorry, her certifications include special education, pre-K, and grades one through six, her school district administrator certification, and her SAS administrator certification as well. Her experiences include a sixth-grade ELA in special education teacher in Newark, as well as a teacher on special assignments as a vice principal, a summer principal, special education chair, all in Newark, before joining 12 Corners Middle School in 2015. She's a native of Midlakes and earned her bachelor's, as we said, from St. John Fisher before embarking on her career at Newark and then coming to the middle school, is a highly organized and knowledgeable professional who always puts children first. She's a positive role model for students and truly believes that all children deserve a caring, constructive environment where they can share their strengths as they grow academically. She's a thoughtful planner and is highly collaborative with her department and her teaching team. Her strength in the humanities has made her the perfect teacher for the self-contained seventh and eighth grade English and social studies classes at TCMS. Her lessons are differentiated to meet the needs of her learners, build on their prior knowledge, and are calibrated at just the right level of rigor to help her students achieve the learning standard. She's immersed herself in the culture of our school. She heparoned and supervised a number of events and activities. She created and supervised a morning basketball program for her students, created book clubs for her students to regularly read with an administrator, attended activity nights, the closure party, and other concerts and sporting events in which her students have participated. Justine has done an incredible job, enough to make one parent write a specific letter to Mr. Thomas, saying, quote, "Justine has been a phenomenal support and crucial in my son's transition back to Brighton. She's a child-centered, dedicated teacher, fully aware of possible effects and changes of his treatments, prompts to making suggestions for skills that my son should learn, and truly cares for students' well-being. Brighton schools are very blessed to have her on our staff. We have to agree and congratulate her on her tenure appointment." I can see your adorable and beautiful son looking at you. Jamie has a bachelor's degree in business administration from Syracuse University and a master's in education from Nazareth. Her certifications include childhood education grades one through six and students with disabilities grades one through six. Her experiences include being a three-through-five, grade three-through-five, long-term sub at French Road, then an academic support instructor, then a long-term sub in third grade before becoming a probationary third-grade teacher in 2015 at French Road. She's a committed educator who goes above and beyond her work with students, colleagues, and parents each day. She exemplifies the FRES star qualities in her interactions with all individuals. She is a kind and caring person and you will always see her in her classroom or the hallway with a smile on her face. This kindness extends into her work with students as well. Her third-grade classroom community is inclusive of all students, and she highlights their individual strengths as they grow and learn. She knows strengths and the needs of her students and uses that knowledge to plan the best instruction individually for them each day. Students will regularly be working on different activities or in small groups in the classroom to allow them the best experience to learn what they need. Her students know the expectations and routines, and they work together to work as a team to learn. Assistant Principal Diana Spagnola shared that she exemplifies having a student-centered philosophy and flexible instructional mindset. Either as an academic support provider or a classroom teacher, she's able to prevent relevant, organized student data to consider strengths and to monitor student growth and progress. She's a constant collaborator and frequently consults with grade-level colleagues, behavior consultants, and other service providers. Throughout her time at French Road, Jamie has shown a desire to grow and learn as an educator and is committed to her students and families. She's an asset to her students and the FRES community. For that and all of her hard work, oh, and her son is up, that's wonderful. We congratulate all of you and you, Jamie, on your tenure appointment.
I was going to ask, I want to make sure that everybody's watching the little one anyway. So, just a quick comment. First of all, I think in every one of those narratives, you heard a very common theme, which was the individual attention being paid to every individual child that are being supported and instructed by the people receiving tenure appointments tonight. So for the families who are here, what that means is you are giving up a tremendous amount of time for these fine professionals to spend time on each individual child. But what it also means, if you think about this interesting thing that's happening tonight, you're here supporting them. You've supported them all along as an individual. Many of you, the parents who are here, helped support and create children who then had that same attention to somebody else's child. And if you remember back to when they were going to school, the people getting tenure tonight, you hoped that somebody teaching them would love them and care for them as you did, as their own. Well, I have great news for you. They are now passing on that legacy and doing that with each individual child that they're working with. So I hope that all of you are as proud of them as we are. You've done a pretty incredible job, helping them, supporting them, and helping create these professionals that are touching the lives of our kids each and every day. And as a dad, as a community member, I can't tell how much we appreciate that. So thank you for all that you did. Thank you to all of you, the professionals in the room who are receiving their tenure tonight, for just being pretty special people. This is a lifetime commitment that we are making and that you are making, we hope that you are making. We certainly know that we are making as a school community, saying that we want you here for the duration of your career. We want you to touch the lives of our kids, and we can't tell how much we appreciate that work.
You know, and from the Board of Education standpoint, you know, one of our main missions in life is to work and make sure that we have the environment here that is nurturing and welcoming and teaching and administrative professionals who want to come to Brighton and stay here and develop their careers here and excel here. And that's really one of the building blocks of what makes Brighton such a great place. So we're extremely proud of all of you, and we especially are thankful of all the families who were able to come and join in tonight. And thank you for all that you do every single day for each child and each family, and keep up the good work, and we look forward to even greater things from everyone. So thank you so much and thank you for coming this evening.
Just two quick comments. Dan, are you doing a group picture?
Okay, yeah.
Did you want to do that? I think that would be great. So we're going to pause really quickly for you to do a group picture, so the tenure recipients, we would just ask when we do pause if you could come up and probably by the screen. We'll have to black that out though, so it's not behind you like that. And then the only other piece I want to point out also is the Brighton Teachers Association President Judy Wegman is here tonight representing your teachers' association and the incredible professionals in this district who you have belonged to for a while but are now joining in a different way, and we appreciate Judy and all of your support and the ways in which our experienced staff members are passing along this great legacy of instruction for kids. So thanks Judy for being here to support all of this group, as you have since they started here as well. So thank you.
So at this point, we will take a brief recess so that we can get the photograph done, and those that need to leave are certainly welcome to do so. However, once we start, then you're in it for the rest of the evening. Good evening and welcome back to the continuation of our Board of Education meeting for June 12th. We now offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here in attendance who wish to ask a question of the Board at this point in time, make a statement, may do so. We ask you to please be brief, and when recognized, step to the podium and give us your name and address also. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board at this point in time? Okay, seeing that we have none, we will then move on with the remainder of our agenda, and we move to our reports section. Tonight, under our reports section, financial reports, we have three separate reports from Lou and Dahlia. The Reserve Funds Financial Report and Authorization as of June 30th, 2018, along with the customary Treasurers Report and the Financial Summary Budget Status Report. The Budget Status Report dated June 12th, and then the Treasurers Report for the period ending April 30th, as you know those lag. So I guess, if we could, I'm going to ask for a motion to receive and approve those three financial reports.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Martha. If I could, I'll make a couple of comments. We have had this material to us. Specifically, the Audit Committee, which is Karen Hatch, Larry Davis, and yours truly, met with Lou and Dahlia. We also had one of our auditor groups in. We met last week, Thursday, correct, folks?
No, Friday.
And... Or Friday, I'm sorry, Friday. And we reviewed a number of items that we could talk about a little bit later in other Board Member reports, but all of this material was reviewed by Audit Committee. The one note, item number one, under financial reports, this is Lou's recommendation to Dr. McGowan and on to us for the updated situation and status on reserve funds and authorization in terms of amount of money moved to those reserve funds and among those reserve funds that Lou is recommending we take action on at the end of the school year. And all that material was reviewed by Audit Committee. We found it to be appropriate, outstanding in terms of its detail and planning, and therefore highly recommend approval of the recommendation to the group. So, does anyone have anything further, question, comment?
I would just like to add that the document Lou prepared via this new recommendation is a really just well-thought-out document that explains what our reserve funds are, how we deposit money into them, how we make those decisions. And I think it's actually a great, great document for the public to access if that's the kind of thing they're interested in.
And we will, it is a part of a new requirement. Lou, at some point, can, if we like, can update us on some of the new financial reporting requirements, but one of those is to be more trans, I guess transparent, but they want, there are more reporting requirements around fund balance, reserve funds, specific purposes, status, future planning, and things like that. So, Karen's correct. The work that Lou put into this and Dahlia is very well-done. It will all be posted after our actions this evening. We'll have that available and posted online. So, anything further, anything additional? Lou, did you have anything to add at all?
Yes.
We're good. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We don't have, our standing committees for Monroe County School Boards are all completed for the year. We did have our annual meeting back in May, where, at the end of May, where our new officers were appointed or voted in. Marv, anything new on a BOSI's report from Sora?
Gee, my wife gave me a big report tonight. You know, I don't understand that. Yes.
Whoa. Thank you, Sora.
Yeah. No, she usually does give, you know, but this one looks, wow. Skills USA Competition, Brighton School District student in cosmetology by the name of Brianna, and I don't know her last name, a junior, placed first in the state in customer service, and she's going on to the Nationals in Louisville probably this summer. And actually, the BOSI's One had quite a, quite a run there. They had three first-place people in this competition, nine second-place, and five third-place winners. So, that was quite an honor. The BOSI's Foundation Golf Tournament was June 1st. Rothenberg Accounting Firm renewed a five-year contract with BOSI's One for their internal audit. And as many of us know, the salary cap for district superintendents to be lifted was passed by both the House and State, House and Senate, and we know where it's going in the Governor's office. So, that's too bad, but they're making some progress with that. The Board, BOSI's Board is now using Board Docs as their vehicle for communication. Thomas Speckah from Webster will be the Director of the Four Counties School Board Association.
He was the executive, he was hired as the Executive Director of the Four Counties, correct?
Yep, yep. And they have a waiting list of eighty students for the fall. So, all is well within BOSI's.
Wow. Well, they do great work, so there you go.
And one BOSI's note, obviously, we didn't get there this year on a visit, and we had talked about doing that, and things sort of got away from us a bit. Some of us had been out there, had, did visit out there with some curriculum review and other things that were going on, so we did have a Brighton presence. But I did put a calendar note for 18-19. So, what we'll do is we'll start in September with contacts at 1 and see what the best time of the year. We always want to make sure it's planned well so that we can see Brighton students while we're out there in addition to other programs.
Maybe earlier rather than later, that's the...
Yeah, it depends on their timing and what they have going on, too, and our timing of the year. But we will definitely, that will be, we will get that done and visit out there next year.
And I think tomorrow night, EMCC is having a graduation, and I told my wife I would join her.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you very much.
So, I think Kevin's going to be out there, too.
Will that be there, too? Well, that's great. Well, thank you for representing us there also. Thank you.
Great stuff.
Appreciate it. Other Board Member reports this year, I mean, this is the time of the year when we're doing a million things, if we have a few things. Julie, did you have anything?
I just thought I would report on, a week ago, Friday was a busy day. We started out at 7:45 in the morning at the high school for the high school, in the auditorium now rather than the gymnasium for the high school awards.
Yes.
Assembly, and that was, it's always wonderful to see all of our students now on stage where we can really see them. And that's a point of pride. And then, we moved on to the middle school in the afternoon, where the middle school received recognition as a school to watch, and it's the fifth, fifth time? Am I saying it right?
Fifth time.
Fifth time in thirteen years, yes, that we've received that designation. And so, we're very proud of that. And then, we left middle school, and we went to Midvale Country Club and celebrated teacher retirement with the BTA Spring Event, or Spring Event. And after that, some of us went to Oak Hill to celebrate with the Alumni Association and our alumnis of the Hall of Fame winners of the year. So, that was a really busy day, and that's just one, one day.
Yeah, that was.
In the month of June. That was day one in June, and everybody has been running around doing all kinds of wonderful things and celebrating our students since then, and maybe someone else fell in on something else.
That day is always like that. It's just always a great fun day.
It was a great day.
Could you see the gamut of it, and it is quite, quite a day, but reflecting back on it especially, you know?
Yeah.
Marv, anything else?
Well, Social Studies Review, as you all know, is over. The Teacher Center Policy Board met last week for the last time this year, but we have set up a summer workshop meeting in August.
Okay, great.
That I'm pretty excited about. And it's going to be a half-day deal, but it'll be... And I made mention, you know, Judy Wegman will have to negotiate, you know, teacher salaries. So, I said, well, I might have Kevin negotiate my salary for that half-day.
That's pretty simple.
Yeah.
That is pretty simple.
Easiest negotiator ever.
Simplest task right there.
That's pretty simple. The answer's always the same. Martha, anything to add?
No.
Karen?
I know Manish will probably bring this up, but I wanted to publicly thank the PTSA for the lovely luncheon. The Board of Education is always the invited, one of the invited guests, and as a former PTSA president, I have a couple of colleagues up here who've done the same. I know that that's a lot of work, so we appreciate being included in that every year. So, thank you. And then, I, so I started the week with a luncheon and ended with Audit Committee. It may have, did we start with a high note?
It sounds like a better start than finish. I don't know.
All important work.
Audit Committee is delightful, as always. That was our last meeting of the school year, and we covered a lot of information from change orders to, that we'll talk about later, and audit.
Yep, we did, just, and Larry could chime in, too. We, we got a report out from one of our auditors, Ray Wager, and his partner, one of his partners were there to talk about preliminary and regular audit processes, and we have a great relationship with them. We always receive claims audit reports for the period of time since we last met and go over those with Chris Ticky. The Reserve Fund Plan is what we talked about most, dominated our conversation. But then also now, and this will continue to be the case, and we probably, we will be further messaging to the community as time moves on, but our construction plans now, very visible, of course, is the track and the tennis courts and the football field. But as we really roll into the K-12 modernization and begin receiving information back from State Education Department on Council Rock and things like that, the Audit Committee will begin reviewing more of that. And then Larry's work, he'll bring, along with Lou, the work from the owner, construction manager, architect meetings that you folks have, too. So, we covered a lot of ground on Friday, yes.
I've never heard an audit meeting called delightful, but I'll go with delightful.
I know.
It's silly.
Yes, it was good.
It was productive, and I think it was delightful.
I would say this about all the construction work. We're embarking on a four- or five-year lift right now. And so, I think it's like the iceberg. What we see is back there on the track, but all the work, and you alluded to this adequately at least, and I think in a great way, the amount of work that Lou and Dahlia do behind the scenes to chase down numbers, chase down people. I'm watching the work. It's not chase them down, but just ensure that every dollar is spent correctly. I just think the little piece we see out here is not representative of all the work that's being done behind the scenes by Lou, Dahlia, Maria, all the people who are chasing receipts, making sure the dollars are spent correctly. It's painstaking detail. They have a bunch of challenges ahead with tariff costs and how that could affect our cost of projects. I refer to that as a headwind. There are some challenges we'll face ahead because of uncertain markets for materials. They're all over that. They're on top of it. So, it's a ton of work. It's going to be seen over five years, like really busy in July and August, and then it's going to seem like less. But there's a ton of work behind the scenes that we should all feel really good about that's getting done correctly and in a very detailed fashion.
Very good point. You're absolutely correct on that. And more and more to come. The rapidity will increase, too. So, Andrea?
I think while my standing committees are done, tomorrow is the last PTSA meeting of the year that I will be attending.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much. You know, again, there's so many things, and many of that's been covered. I would make note of, one, yesterday, we, a number of us attended the Brighton Rotary Luncheon Meeting, the regular meeting, and Dylan Holcomb was invited to be the speaker.
That's amazing.
And it was just really interesting. You know, Dylan's an interesting student and a young man, but I think he also is so representative of this year in Brighton, and our, not only our senior class, but so many of our high school students, their voice collectively and individually, their perspectives on the world locally, regionally, and nationally, internationally. And so, I think it was an interesting, it was nice of them to invite, and he offered a nice, interesting perspective on his thoughts moving forward and some of the things that he's going to go to the University of Rochester in the fall, and his intentions to stay active in so many areas of activism and advocacy. And it was an interesting talk, and I think we all enjoyed hearing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Besides what he had to say, how he presents himself.
Right.
It's so impressive to see our graduates.
Yes.
So competent and so knowledgeable and so willing, so caring about their community, both the small, the Brighton community, as well as the bigger world. And he's ready to go now.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's ready to go, and he's going to, he's going to do good things, I think.
And we've talked about it all year, how impressive it is, and how proud I think we all are when we hear our students speak amongst each other and with themselves and present to the broader community. Not just our seniors, but all of our students.
Lot of poise, lot of poise.
Very poised and knowledgeable, you know, which is a huge knowledge and activism.
And thought, very thoughtful.
I was very impressed when he read off all these statistics. I thought, oh, man.
So, anyway, that was, that's our updates from the Board as current activities. So, we'll move on from that. Our Brighton Teachers Association report. Beth?
Hi. It's great to hear about Dylan. Dylan was one of my fourth-grade students, so it was great to see him.
Did you see him go through the halls?
Yeah. That's always exciting, but I think I saw half of my class from fourth grade.
Oh, that's really...
So, it was really fun to see how they've grown and changed.
That's cool. That's a cool event.
Dylan always had a great voice, even in fourth grade. So, it's something that I think is, something that he's carried with him for a long time. So, just a few things to update you. Teachers are busy, 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 and our days are kind of like yours. We just go from one thing to another. But a few things I'd love to share. So, Laura Simonelli wanted to share from her sixth-grade class, the fifteen-to-one social studies class. They were learning in May about ancient Greece achievements, and as part of that exploration of architecture and columns, the students worked in growing, in groups to design and build structures using columns to hold the weight of several textbooks. And the pictures that you see, and they will be on the website as well, are some of their moments of their collaborative inquiry. Marguerite Opet, our school counselor from French Road, she wanted to just recognize that we invited the second graders over for a visit, and they were able to visit some classrooms, and they saw a brief concert while they were there. So, they're getting, touching their toes into the new building, which is kind of fun. For them, Lori Iannello, who was one of our tenure recipients, she said that in music at French Road, fourth and fifth-grade choruses have completed their spring concerts with great success, and the music classes have been engaged in playing the recorder for grades three through five, while the fourth graders are learning the ukulele and the fifth graders are learning guitar. So, there's always a lot of action and music going on down there. As a FRES tradition, all students participated in the Memorial Day Ceremony that included introductions of the veterans who were in attendance, and a group of band students accompanied the school in singing the Star Spangled Banner, as well as whole-school singing of the patriotic songs. It was a great time and a very moving ceremony that included all students and staff. Ina Sham, a fifth-grade special education teacher at French Road, she wanted to report out that the Human Rights Day celebration on May 17th and 18th at French Road was a great success. Three classes from Mrs. Godfrey, Mrs. Sham, and Miss Webster, who was in for Miss Eden during her time off, studied different areas of the Holocaust. Survivor Leah Malik not only came to speak to our groups, but came to the Human Rights Museum that they put on. Leah was very impressed with the students' presentations and said, "Now, I know that my talk was not in vain." We were very fortunate to have her as part of the learning experience at fifth grade. I included some information about the eighth-grade trip to Vermont, the German trip. They went on May 17th. Thirty-three eighth-grade German students boarded a bus to Stowe, Vermont. The first stop was the Ever Ben &amp; Jerry's, which is a tradition where they saw the production of ice cream. After much sampling, they checked into the Trap Lodge in Stowe, Vermont, and there they enjoyed two nights of delicious Austrian food, spoke German with Johann von Trapp, Maria's son, and they even sang him a song in German. They did a lot of activities while they were there, cruised on Champlain, on Lake Champlain, visited some other things. And then, there were just a few pictures that I included. It was a wonderful time, and they really enjoyed the whole event while they were there. Catherine Lebel, she wanted to share out that for the third summer, the YMCA Camp Gorham is partnering, sorry, with Brighton Schools to offer financial assistance for students to attend summer camp for two weeks in the Adirondacks. Last year, four Brighton students attended camp on the program, and this year, there will be ten lucky students going. Funding for this program was made possible through generous donations to the YMCA in the name of Larry Davis Jr., father of current Brighton Central School District Board Member. So, that was very exciting, and Catherine is grateful for that. We also have Lauren Mishuki wanted to share that about the Quebec trip, and sixty kids went to that, and then the French Art Recreation Project was going on as well. Kristen Cooper wanted to share that Council Rock students learned about the bike and pedestrian safety in FIZED on May 3rd, May 7th, to help prepare students and families for their Bike and Walk to School Week. Several people participated. They had people from the Monroe County Public Safety Office, and then Officer John Starr from the Brighton Police Department joined the PE classes to show students how to properly fit a helmet, how to discuss traffic and safety topics, and they were going through street signs, how to correctly cross the street, and proper etiquette when passing pedestrians on a bike. Council Rock also celebrated the Bike and Walk to School Week, May 7th through the 11th. Families had been encouraged to ride or walk any day during the week to promote healthy lifestyle choices. Then, the AATG German Awards 2018, so I'm not going to list, say them all, but you can see them on the website. Fifty-three Brighton High School students took the National German Exam, given by the American Association of Teachers of German. The exam is taken by twenty thousand German students nationwide, so a total of forty-three students received scores high enough to be recognized at the gold, silver, bronze, and achievement levels. So, congratulations to all of them. Those are listed on the website as well. And then, one more thing, an English teacher from TCMS, Stacy Kugel, she wanted to let everyone know that the seventh-grade ELA classes enjoyed an author visit. From Keely Hutton, the author of Soldier Boy, Keely lives in Fairport, and this is her debut novel about the Ugandan Civil War and the other things that are going on in that country. One of the characters in the novel is based on the true story of Richard Anwar, a survivor, and Ricky also was the founder of Friends and Orphans, and so they wanted to make sure that everyone knew that that was a wonderful opportunity for all of those students.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Seth?
Thank you for your reporting out all year. We certainly appreciate it.
Sure. My pleasure.
Always wonderful, sort of a window into all the different classrooms. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our PTSA report today, we have a guest presenter, Manish Dixit. Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. So, from the PTSA, we, it was a busy month for us as well. I counted about sixteen events spread across different buildings. At Council Rock, I just talked with Mr. Tappan. We had a successful staff appreciation lunch. The librarian at Council Rock is working on securing the author visit for next year. We had several events that were partnering with Council Rock and French Road Elementary to facilitate the transition. So, it started with the Two Go Three Movie Night for rising third graders. Mr. Tappan and Dr. Rio are working together on all the transition activities. May 9th, at French Road, we had the annual Bike to School Event. And on May 10th, in conjunction with Council Rock, there was an orientation for second-grade students and parents who were transitioning to FRES next year. We had a wonderful turnout, and students and parents had an opportunity to tour French Road, meet the administrators and teachers, and have ice cream. On June 1st, fifth grades, fifth graders were invited to TCMS for a crossover activity night, food, music, lots of fun games. It's a great opportunity for fifth graders to become more familiar with the middle school. more familiar with the middle school. And on June fifth, at the middle school, there were two events, meeting with the principal. I'm sorry, this is at the elementary school. The meeting with the principal. Also, Justin McQuaid, the FRES librarian and staff from the Brighton Memorial Library, talked about summer reading. The family movie night for incoming third graders and their families. And at the middle school, wanted to give you an update on the Zero Waste Initiative. The sixth grade is at seventy-one percent, seventh grade is at fifty-two percent, and the eighth grade is at forty-three percent. While the sixth graders entered TCMS, well-trained from FRES and very energetic about recycling, even with the lower seventh and eighth grader numbers, there is an overall fifty-eight percent of waste diversion at the middle school. The Bike and Walk to School, Mr. Thomas counted at least eighty to ninety bikes, which is great, plus even more walkers, students who walked or biked sign into the atrium. Mr. Thomas also mentioned that on any given day, he thinks about a hundred and eighty to two hundred kids are walking or riding to school at the middle school. Karen mentioned the luncheon. Julie mentioned the Schools to Watch redesignation. June sixth was the last PTSA meeting with the principal at the middle school. Nate Merritt and Mr. Thomas presented on Brighton sports. At the high school, the meeting with the principal had an year-end wrap-up and an open forum. Dr. Hall gave a recap of the school year, efforts to continue the district's focus on diversity and mental health initiatives. There was also information on vaping devices and juggling concerns, efforts that are taking place this year and next year to combat social media and bullying. Special education also wrapped up the year with a breakfast. And at the central PTSA, we held a meeting during evening, and there were two presentations. Some of you had an opportunity to attend. One was by Dr. Catherine Rizoni on preventing sports-related injuries in student athletes. And the other presentation was the impact of cigarettes by Alexandra Poet. We also have the central PTSA meetings. They take place on the second Wednesday of each month at nine thirty PM in this room. We have the dates for them as part of this report, which will be on the website. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and thank you for coming this evening. Dr. McGowan, Super Tennis Report.
Just a few comments, because largely my work is focused on reporting the blueprint items tonight. But congratulations to the class of two thousand and eighteen. I know we're about a week away, of course, from that shining moment for them.
One week from tonight, graduation.
That's exactly right.
Yep. But their last day of classes was yesterday, well, all high school students, but it was fun to watch them count down on the softball field this year.
It was the first time I'd ever seen it, because they were on the softball field, not on the turf, while I was picking up for twelve corners. And it was.
It's really neat.
It was pretty impactful to watch them celebrate that, that achievement.
Yeah. So, you know, it was interesting, a conversation with the Council Rock, with a kindergarten parent today at a field trip, about seeing their slideshow at the banquet and seeing in their slideshow the pictures of all of these things, like the field trip today for the Council Rock kids, and this journey that they're on. The parade yesterday is a reminder of that.
So cool.
All of the different activities that revolve around that. And then, you know, as I've said to all of you in the past, I would say to anybody listening, if they get the chance, particularly because the graduation is, is recorded and then, and then played back, if you watch our kids, that moment right before their name is called and they cross the stage, it's pretty incredible to see that they've got this life in front of them, all the things that have happened to us since our high school graduation. They've got a lot of incredible things to come. But it's also a lot of fun to celebrate all the incredible moments they've had so far. So we're certainly in that mode, and as Julie had pointed out, a lot of that happening now. Tomorrow night is the MCC Eastern Road Career Center Awards. Marvin Sor will be there. I'm looking forward to it. I know Dr. Baker, Dr. Hall, we all attend and celebrate our kids and their opportunity there as well. And just a lot of thanks to our volunteers, to our parents, to our staff members for creating all those memories, but to our kids. They've had a great year and they're winding up towards the end. So congratulations to them and all the ways that we do. The Urban Suburban Awards were recently, all of these different opportunities to recognize their accomplishments throughout the year. So we appreciate that. That's all for me.
There are no shortage, there's no shortage of activities and recognitions, certainly through the end of May through the end of June.
No.
There's no shortage of good news.
No.
There's great news.
I'd like to finish the report with one last recognition before the blueprints, while we have this moment, and just say thank you to Martha for serving, for generation in so many different ways, but certainly as a board member.
It's been an honor and a privilege, as you know, and I tell that to everybody. And thank you guys all very much as well.
All the best with all the new stuff to come.
That's right.
Thank you.
Rank it time.
Yeah. Next up this evening, then, we will turn it over to Lou Alimo for construction update. We talked a little bit earlier with regard to audit committee taking a look at some things. We have a couple of change order bid type things that we're going to address in a minute, but Lou will give us an update on where things are generally.
Yes.
I guess we're going to look at the big picture.
I really like that.
They're very creative, Lou.
Well, first of all, thanks for the board's support and your comments. I have, I have a great team here included. Tonight's presentation is Kevin Geisel, who's doing a lot of the nuts and bolts work. I'm really good with the numbers, but they're really good with the, the mechanics and making sure that no one's going to pull a fast one over on us. So I'm really excited and really proud to present the work that's been, is being done parallel to the construction and to the design elements of our, of this big capital project. So what we're, what we're working on, and there's some key questions that I'm asking the, our team here to, to answer tonight. If you recall, when we were negotiating our construction contracts and our architectural contracts specifically, we asked to our architects to enhance their deliverable, not for just the, the plans and specifications. We asked them for modeling of, as a deliverable. So tonight's presentation is to show you what we're doing with that modeling, define what the modeling is, show how we're, how we're investing in our maintenance of our facilities, and how we're setting ourselves up for success in future projects. So tonight I have, making his Board of Education debut after thirty-seven and a half years, Kevin Geisel, our Director of Mechanical Services.
Should we have music?
I think we should. Give us a round of applause. That's right.
And we also have Bill Murkowski, who's an architect, professional training's architect, and he switched really to the other side of the desk to work with owners in partnering with, with teams like ours to work with architects to really define what that deliverable is from the architects and setting businesses up and organizations like ourselves for success. So we have Bill Murkowski joining us as well tonight. Tom?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having, having me here. It's great to finally get to share a little bit of this with you all. As Lou said, I have been an architect for about fifteen years and been on one side of the desk, learning a lot about blueprints myself and how clients interpret those blueprints. But as you know, with technology, technology's hitting every part of our lives. And with that technology, blueprints are changing as well. And we're getting electronic blueprints nowadays. You see a lot of PDFs being delivered to clients. But also, what's hitting the architectural market is BIM modeling. And I have a definition here, just in case anybody, nobody's ever heard of the word BIM before. But BIM modeling is short for Building Information Modeling. And it is the act of creating a 3D model of a facility for the purpose of visualization, engineering, conflict analysis, cost estimating, as-built documentation, and management of building maintenance. And through the years, through the years, BIM, the BIM modeling aspect of the architectural, engineering, construction industry has been advancing so fast that clients didn't really even realize how much they were part of that design. The Revit software is what you might hear more frequently used by our architects, both architects are using Revit, the engineers are using Revit, has replaced AutoCAD, which, as everyone knows, AutoCAD replaced the blueprints, the drafting tape, as I, I did learn in school. But what happened with that replacement was, it was intended to give owners more of a visibility on what they were, what they were acquiring before it was built, prior to that construction. So I thought that first I would share a little bit real quickly on the nation. How has the nation adopted BIM? And who is embracing Building Information Modeling? Like Lou said at the beginning, who else is, what other owners are requesting BIM on their projects? As you can see here, in two thousand and seven, it was only twenty-eight percent of the projects. But as you see, in two thousand and nine, forty-nine percent? And in two thousand and twelve, seventy-one percent? So you can see a lot more use, a lot more uses for BIM are being applied to construction, to the construction industry today. We're going to be talking about, a lot about value added, so I thought I would share this slide as well. This is a report done by McGraw-Hill Construction Magazine. And they did a report, a smart report, based on engineering firms, architecture firms, contracting firms, and owners as well, to try to look at some of the reduced conflicts using BIM, the schedules that were improved using BIM, and better performance in regards to the infrastructure. So that's just to name a few. But I'm not going to go through every one of them, but they were seeing improvements of sixty-five percent, forty-three percent, forty-six percent in, in all these different areas. One of the biggest leading benefactors, on top, obviously, the owners because of this, but the construction companies were leading in the use of BIM, more even in the architects and the engineers, because they were seeing the financial gains in construction cost savings with beating those schedules, beating those deadlines, and seeing more conflicts resolved prior to construction. So this leads us into the process. It's not just about a model. We started with a model. We need to, this is why Lou had negotiated with the architects and engineers on behalf of the district to say, we need a model first. We need a model to start the process going. But once we started that, we've been going back and forth. Kevin and I have been discussing these, these requirements that the district is expecting out of the architects, going back and forth, asking them to represent the existing buildings accurately in those models, touching on different areas that maybe even some that weren't even in the scope, but needed to be represented for backgrounds. And you'll see in a second why those are important. But to quote Johnny Fortune, who was a big proponent of, of BIM in the industry, is "A project team's activities in concert with the owner's requirements that provide the greatest potential lifecycle, and this is BIM done right." There's a lot of BIM going on out there, but it's the owner's involvement that really is what capitalizes to make BIM completed the right way. So ownership of virtual buildings is, is really what we're talking about. And as you can see up here, we already have four virtual models of all of our schools here modeled by the architects. And we got these models extremely early, which was the benefit that we're going to see right now. These benefits of the, of BIM start with pre-construction. And I'm going to show you the access that we had, and Kevin, Kevin's going to kick this off here. Go to my, we're going to display one of our, one of our models.
When, when we talk about conflicts, here's our.
This is the middle school, yeah.
Twelve Corners Middle School. We talk about conflicts in, in the 2D world, X and Y, axis. You've got a lot of information, but it really doesn't tell you much. And there'll be much better illustration in other slides. But here's a piece of equipment that's in a locker room. It's just above head height. We can't get at it to even work on it. There, these are conflicts that now that we're looking at a 3D model are obvious. Everybody's going, oh, yeah, now we know what you mean. Here are more, here's, here's some more. These are obvious, but in a 2D layout, these lights look like they're where they belong. Go 3D, and what is a light doing on the floor? And everything that's certain is one of, these are the things we call out, send back to the architectural firm, and have their team take a look at it and go, okay, we've got to fix that. And let's fix it before we get out in the field and start spending money with contractors.
So this is one of the big value adds prior to construction starting, because this is normal. And we need to bring these things to their attention. And Kevin can start to see some potential conflicts even in his maintenance. But there's also, this is on the owner's side. Also, in the construction side, we have, let me jump back to my PowerPoint slide here. The opportunity to reduce conflicts in the field. So prior to construction, there's a traditional way of doing construction coordination between trades. Oftentimes, once those drawings are delivered at bid, and this will happen in this project as well, those drawings are distributed to subcontractors. And automatically, they start overlapping their drawings on top of a 2D piece of paper, and they start running the ductwork, run the piping, run the structural, trying to see where the conflicts are. So as you can see here on a 2D piece of paper, it's quite a maze of information. With the addition of BIM, we have the opportunity now to require the trades to actually model this in 3D prior to construction even beginning. As you can see, this timeframe that we allot for them to do that, if you look at the picture on the right, allows them to actually virtually model the fire protection piping, as you can see wrapping around the magenta ductwork there. That was not like that during the design documents. It is expected that they're going to get design documents that are not fully coordinated. And they're going to go through this process, process during construction. And that's why those construction companies are seeing those benefits. They're heading these problems off early, getting their hands on these models as fast as they can. And as we know, pictures are worth a thousand words. And once they see that picture of everything, they're not just looking at a little detail on a, on a 2D piece of paper. They're actually looking at the virtual model of the building.
Let me step in here on this slide for a second.
Yes.
What we're looking at here, we've got a suspended ceiling area, and then the deck that's being supported by a structure. How else would we view that? Would we have to get a ladder, pop the ceiling? We're looking around, we've got this limited view. We have gone from this and decided, yeah, we, we can't make the bottle, the model live right now. It'd be too much time spent. But here we are, looking at a section that we chose to look at out of that model, and we're looking, we're just in the middle of it right now. Anywhere we want to be. Can we move around in there?
And now we'd like to get into some of the post-construction benefits. So if there weren't enough benefits prior to construction, this is setting us up for future benefits down the road for the whole lifecycle of the building. And Kevin's going to speak on that first here with preventative maintenance.
So we have a list of equipment. I send some of my team members out and tell them, I don't want anything left off this list. Go ahead and check that. This, in the, in the data world, that will take us to a piece of equipment. They can understand what needs to be done. Now, we're going to grease it, we're going to change a belt, we're going to look at a filter, how old is this piece of equipment, and do all kinds of studies on it, and recording that in notes. Additionally, we have the ability to, if they don't understand exactly what their task is, we can send them out and they're looking at these pieces of equipment. You can hover over that with a mouse, and it brings up all kinds of documentation. You can go to the website for the piece of equipment. We'll talk about that more in a little bit. And this, this next slide. So with a scan of a space, this is how detailed we can get. If I decide that one of these motors, we, we've got a heat loss in a building. We look at one of our systems and say, the, this motor should be running, it's not. I'll switch over to this one. I'm going to send a team member out here. He wants to know, what am I going to see when I get there? I'm going to hover over this tag. It brings up the information. I know I'm working on pump number one. Starts to give me a little bit of background, but then we can click. They're on, they've got their laptop. We can click, and now we've gone to the manufacturer's website. We've got all kinds of information on it. Just that quick.
So every piece of equipment and machinery that they're touching is being built in this model. That's what we're asking our architects and engineers for. So Kevin, as we're designing this project, is building this database live to support, you know, his team and future teams to come. So that's it.
So the key here has been for us to actually get our hands on these models early. We got our hands on these models right in schematic design. These models were constructed, and that allowed Kevin the time for him and I to walk through them and him to evaluate them month by month. So this last portion is the BIM, how BIM improves the owner's experience of design review sessions. This, the more questions we can ask, the more value to the finished product we get. Kevin?
Okay, so back to a traditional way of looking at things. This is a 2D diagram, and I want you to remember this blue feature here.
This is our new cafeteria at Council Rock.
Yeah, this is cafeteria, the cafeteria stage, the serving line down here, where people would sit to have their lunch. Remember the blue line? Understand that in our traditional 2D drawings, we didn't have any of this furniture in here. This is a lot more detail, because we're looking at a PDF of what the model could represent. So 2D, and now, we want to go into the room and say, all right, these are our seating areas, this is where the students can be. We can shuffle them around. areas, this is where the students can be, we can shuffle them around, literally move them with a click of a mouse." Remember the blue line was our folding door, okay? Now we're gonna have a concert, parents are coming. How many do we expect? We can look at the seating, in this many rows, times, count them up, and without ever lifting a finger, scratching a door, we know how many seats we can put in that space. Now, the other thing is, when we looked at that folding door in 2D, we didn't understand how high it was. This piece of the structure here may be a little bit distracting to anybody who's gotta sit way back in this room. It's not, it may be a structural piece that needs to be that large, but if we get to look at it in the model, decision-makers can say, you know, "We would at least like to have been asked the question, can that opening be made higher?" Just stuff like that to review. Good, good stuff, for people that need to make the decisions.
So now, we'd like to take you into a virtual tour of Council Rock. We just picked Council Rock, because most of the work has been, being done in that school. But, to comment again on what Kevin said, the traditional page turn, page turner, if you've ever heard that term. When I was practicing architecture, we'd go, fold out the blueprints, and everybody'd be going page by page by page to see if this is the design that we were looking for, if this is what we wanted. Kevin's brought a little demo here, he's got five rolls of these in his office.
Here's your page turn, you're gonna flip through these one by one.
And the problem was, when, when we were sitting down with owners was, not many owners would ask enough questions going through these, page by page by page, to say, "Okay, looks good, looks good." But now, with these models, we don't just have to see these with the architect present, we have these as our ownership, these are our own, we own them. So now, we can walk around Council Rock in a virtual tour, start to move into the library. What's that library gonna look like? What's happening in that space? What do we think about the layout? What do we think about the colors? If I had more time, I could show you, we could change these colors right now on the fly. Down the road, we can start saying, "We wanna repaint the library, we wanna change out the lighting fixtures." Well, let's just select on that roof, click that lighting fixture and change that out, and in a moment, this whole, this whole view's gonna change. Everybody knows how renderings are very valuable to the owner. Well, this is a live rendering, all the time, and we have access to it to share with the faculty, administrative, administration, the staff, the maintenance staff, anybody that we need to. And, just to show you one more area, like to go into the classroom edition, and we'll So this is the new classroom edition, and it just gives you the opportunity to start walking down the hallway.
Just have a quick, we try to make the corridors instructional spaces, remember all the, trying to preserve learning terms as they were used, so that's note space, cave space, and everything else, so you can kinda see those come to life now. That little groove where it's considered a hallway, and they have a learning space. You can see, kind of what all the concepts we've been talking about in real life.
And you can experience walking down the hallways, turning, taking a look inside of a classroom, see how the children are doing, or, let's just go right into the classroom, take a look at our layouts. The lighting, it gives us an opportunity to evaluate the lighting in the space, is it too much lighting, is it not enough lighting? And, one of the other nice features of this program, the, the BIM model is allowing us to do, is even to do daylight studies. So, if we wanna start taking the sun down and see what the daylighting is gonna be like in that room, we can do that as well. Turn it to nighttime, just gives the district so much flexibility, having their own models, and we call them digital twins. We have a digital twin of everything that we have physically, and we can do this with existing buildings, or new buildings, or renovations. And, to conclude, this, the last value added is the opportunity that future projects, future construction, future architects now have these models, they're updated, and they will stay updated by the facility staff, they'll be swapping that out, I've been training Kevin how to do that, and he's a champ.
That's great.
I, I'd just like to thank the board for this time, for me to present here, I, I've so enjoyed working with Lou and Kevin, and I think I applaud your efforts, and just everything that the district is doing to, for facility maintenance.
Yeah, just, just the comment Martha reminded me, years ago, when we did a construction project, we had those books, all here in front of the board, going through them, and we were going, huh?
I can still remember, it was, they were, you know, obviously, they were everywhere, we didn't have enough room, we're trying, it was a little trip down memory lane, so thanks.
If we, if we set, we bring it, we bring it to the table, and they still all gather around.
Yeah.
People are looking at it upside down.
Upside down, yeah. Yep.
But even, even now, this DIY-ers up here, you can watch this and understand very clearly the benefits in savings and getting it right, and in the long run, for our people to access, maintain, and the next project building upon something that was already done, this is magnificent.
Yeah, really, really. Thanks very much.
Thanks to you both, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's pretty impressive, premier board meeting for Kevin, right?
Thanks, everybody, thanks Lou. So we're going to now move into our blueprint updates and recommendations with regard to priority areas in the blueprint plan. I'll begin with by turning it over to Dr. McGowan.
That was quick, Dan, I thought I was gonna have to drag out the introduction. So, the blueprint process, now this is ending, our second year, is our collaborative, shared decision-making strategic planning process essentially, where each year we begin the process by gathering information, meeting with a large stakeholder group at, on the first Monday in, I'm sorry, the last Monday in June, to walk through each of the priority areas that you have developed over time for our work. The objectives for each of those, or the definition, the goal, the overall goal for each of those is, is very similar year to year, we do tweak the language sometimes around those. Essentially though, we're developing with that group a list of the whats. So what things will we do, or what projects will we undertake in order to accomplish those objectives for each of the priority areas? And for each of those areas, then, there is a district-wide committee, and sometimes committees, that are working on each of those strategies. They have reported throughout the year on the progress made, tonight is the final report from each of those, and a series of recommendations included. And this really sets the stage for our work on Monday, the 25th, the next Blueprint Retreat, where we take the work and continue that forward. We had developed a list of items also last year that would continue into next year already, we'll probably and all likely be pushing some of those out. There's an enormous amount of work in each of the priority areas that has been done, but that still has yet to be done, it just builds on that from year to year. I think the beauty of this process, as we've mentioned to you many times, is that it is not a dusty binder that sits on a shelf, but actually has become the backbone for our committee work throughout the district, and the, the allocation of resources, really a focused mission for all of our committees and all of our work in each of the buildings is based on, what did the blueprint outline for us that we should be doing? So, we don't have a BIM model for it, Kevin, but we do have blueprints, and they're not quite three-dimensional, but we're working on it.
That'll be next up.
Maybe we need one.
Always room for growth there. So we'll start out with the priority area of rigorous coursework, and Dr. Baker will walk us through that piece up.
Great, thanks Kevin. So, as Kevin said, and the board knows, I've gone through much of kind of our accomplishments throughout the year, so I'm not going to highlight every bullet, obviously, as Mark always reminds us, this will be available online and accessible to the community. But, we started out, actually, a few years ago, really trying to formalize or codify, if you will, our definition of rigor. That really has become part of the language that we use on an everyday basis, in our professional development, in any of our curriculum design work, particularly this year, really use that to make recommendations around preferred instructional strategies. And so, moving forward, specific to this goal, I don't know how much you'll see reporting on it into the future, because as I said, it just has been, it has just kinda become ingrained in what we have been doing, but we are going to continue to focus our pedagogy, our, our support on things such as project-based learning, you're gonna hear me talk about, or continue to talk about, learning spaces, the technology integration that's happening right now across the district really reflects some of this rigorous coursework that we, that we set in motion a few, a few years ago. Inquiry, classroom talk, our DPD days this summer will focus on all of this work, and it's done based upon some of the tools that were created by Curriculum Council a couple of years ago. In the area of grading and reporting, again, as I said a little bit earlier, previously, earlier this year, this work really moved from Curriculum Council and the subcommittees there into the buildings this year. And so, at K2 and 3-5, actually Allison and Matt have been working collectively with their team, their building level teams, to look at our report cards, and this is really gonna be phased in both next year, and then the conversation is going to continue. So some of the accomplishments for K5 in this area is taking the philosophy that the board adopted a year ago, and tweaking the language a bit, as well as tweaking the criteria by which we're communicating progress for students. So parents are gonna see some differences, slight differences in the way we report student progress next year. They will continue this work, continue with their committee work the following year, to again, really start to look at our student progress along a K5 continuum, as it relates to not only the new standards, but also our definition of rigor. At 612, both Rob and Tom have been leading groups within each one of their buildings, accessing a lot of the resources that we had identified as kind of defining those best practices. And so, each one of those groups has in and of itself come up with probably, I wanna say, to three to four recommendations that they either want to explore further next year, or actually put into place. And so, the middle school and the high school have been talking to each other about how we, for instance, depict grades on our report cards. Right now, it's a, an A through F with pluses and minuses, and we're going to really, what do I wanna say, we want, we want to minimize those levels that students, that progress is going to be reported on, because as the research says, that really just doesn't really communicate, provide good feedback to students. And there are some other things that they're going to be doing in each one of their buildings with regards to the use of zeros, and the use of fifty percents, but I think as importantly is their dedication and their commitment to continue exploring next year topics such as homework, or how we codify or separate out achievement versus effort. Because if you go back to the original philosophy, what it really purports for us to do, or challenges us to do, is really make sure that all of our reporting does just that, it talks about what a student knows and can do, rather than any type of like extracurricular, or what are those behavioral types of qualities that sometimes do get into or impact a grade. And so, we'll be looking for more work coming out of both of those, all four of those committees next year. The other area that again was somewhat of a legacy this year from the work started by Curriculum Council last year, was the idea of acceleration, and in particular, how we accelerate students both in math, because as you know, we start to accelerate students as early as third grade, but also what type of participation we have in our advanced placement classes. And so, there have been study groups this year looking into that, specific for math. The committee, the K-12 committee has actually broadened the definition of acceleration, and so as a recommendation, we would recommend that we move forward with what I'll call an enhanced referral process, that not only reviews actual achievement in math, but also looks at some of those mathematical tendencies and mathematical behaviors. Because one of the things that we know is that we have a population of students who, for a variety of reasons, maybe haven't had that opportunity to learn, but yet could benefit from a more accelerated program. At the high school level in particular, Tom's been working with his teams around the use of the AP Potential Report, which is a report that we get from College Board every year that identifies students who might be appropriate for certain AP classes, but for some reason or another, have decided not to take those, and so we're kinda using that coupled with, you know, some more counseling efforts to try to encourage kids who might not think about themselves as, you know, kind of AP, AP-level students, and encourage them to actually try it. Combined with some support systems that, again, as a recommendation, will be moving forward. This year, we worked to embed support systems during Saturday, we're going to be adding an AP, kind of a pre-AP boot camp, if you will, during summer programming, where we're identifying students who, again, for a variety of reasons, may be, may have enrolled in an AP class, but may not quite be ready, and we just really want to try to launch their success. New to the council this year was, we took on one of the, one of the blueprint goals with regards to differentiation. This really is a very broad goal, as Kevin said, we're gonna be looking at this particular goal for quite some time. The area that we took on this year was differentiation, or how we address the needs of diversity. In particular, cultural diversity, but we also discussed positive diversity, we talked about socioeconomic diversity, and as you've heard me report previously, did a lot of work on building culturally responsive teaching practices, learned an awful lot, realized we have an awful lot still to learn, so I know, don't wanna, you know, jump ahead on Kevin's report, but one of the things that council's going to be doing next year is really continuing looking at our curriculum, and looking at our resources, and vetting various frameworks for addressing cultural responsiveness within those, to make sure that, and it recalls for creating tools through which we will end up doing curriculum writing, or doing resource selection. This year, we learned about just one such framework, but also have realized that there are a lot more out there that we really need to take a look at. So we will continue with that work through Curriculum Council next year. In the area of technology integration, there were three big areas that we have been working on over the last couple of years. One is that continuing of the build-out or rollout plan of increasing access to technology. And then last year, we started to take a look at not only the staff use of technology, but also the student use, because we need to make sure that our staff are capable of using the tools and embedding the tools in appropriate ways, and we're still working on kind of identifying what those are, as well as the students and their abilities to use. So one of the biggest accomplishments from the District Teaching and Learning Committee this year was to actually create what we're calling a scope and sequence, a K-12 scope and sequence of all the, all the discrete technology skills that need to not only be taught, when they need to be taught, when they need to be enforced, and what our expectations for mastery are. So as a recommendation moving forward, we'll be using that work coupled with some of the work that we're doing already in instruction, and putting that together so that we're ensured that as students move up through the grade levels, they're prepared to use the tools, at the same time, continuing with the professional development that we've been offering for our staff, both during the summer, throughout the year, and through our coaching program. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you. Great job. So, the area that I worked most directly with was the diversity and equity area, which was a new priority area for this year, although certainly diversity and equity, not a new area of focus for the district. Our tasks or our strategies this year to accomplish our objectives in that area were to establish a common definition for equity in an educational setting, review and provide feedback on the Curriculum Council work regarding the elements of diversity and equity, thinking about what we teach in terms of curriculum and the resources that we use. We did focus also in terms of instructional practice on unconscious bias, reviewing our current school climate also, and culture building in terms of diversity equity area. We wanted to assess opportunities for our students and staff and families to access all programs and services, and their current state of family and community engagement for all. We also wanted this group to be able to review district inquiries and requests to provide feedback as requested. So our accomplishments with this committee, we established a common definition for diversity and equity here at Brighton, and just wanna fast forward to you, that for you, and I think it's important to hear the word, so I apologize for reading it at you, but it is important as a statement from the district, that we will, as Brighton Central School District, will continue to respect, value, and validate all of the ways we are different in our community. We recognize the many forms of diversity among us, including race, gender, sexuality, ability, socioeconomic status, and cultural identity in all forms overt and hidden. We believe that these differences, not this difference, these differences are what make us each unique, special, and important as human beings, and prepares each individual to be a good citizen in a multicultural world. All students and staff should be an equal member of a school environment that honors and respects the individuality of each other. Students should be provided with a culturally responsive curriculum by a staff that continues their long history of embracing diversity in all forms, who will be intentionally inclusive in our practices, policies, and environment. So, definition that the group worked on together, I think it's important to point out, respectfully validate all of the ways we are different in our communities, so we really tried to make sure on the committee, on the committee that we continue to focus, focus on all types of diversity as a focus for us going forward. We also then reviewed the Curriculum Council work related to diversity and equity, much of which Debbie has elaborated on tonight. We created a master list of equity areas in need of further study, and then we developed an initial priority list for the study of those areas. We developed draft plans for the study- We developed draft plans for the study of equity areas in the eighteen, nineteen school year and discussed district inquiries, which was really only one inquiry related to diversity and equity. And that was a question we were asked around the Black Lives Matter movement in schools, which is something that was being done in Rochester City School District. The question asked was whether or not we, as a district, would want to start that initiative. And the group talked about it at one of our particular meetings, and at that time wasn't prepared to move forward with that undertaking. Our recommendations are that this area continue to be supported in the blueprint planning process, so we would like to continue this as a priority area. And then our state of equity in the following areas be studied in the coming year. You can't see it, it's cut off at the end, but there is an additional area. You can see the top of the letters. Curriculum, family engagement, so in other words, curriculum through the Curriculum Council work, but family engagement became a big part of the conversation. And it was the fourth, I'm sorry, the third area, the third strategy that we were to get to and simply couldn't as a group. So we really need to work on assessing family engagement in the district, the level of equity, are all families engaged equally? Special education services as well. And the final was human resources and diversity in our hiring process. We want to make sure that we take that on as a topic as well. So the last meeting constituted each of those three groups gathering, so curriculum, family engagement going together, human resources or diversity in our hiring practices, and special education. And they each developed basically an initial research plan for assessing the equity in each of those areas. The plan being, in the middle of next year, being able to start to put forth recommendations to you for future implementation around developing a more equitable environment. Certainly, if it is found in those areas that we have work to do, which we're guessing because they're areas that we wanted to address, we likely will be making suggestions for implementations and recommendations. Any questions about our work in that area?
Kevin, I'd just make a comment, and I was going to refer to something Debbie presented too, but it's certainly, any board members have questions or comment on the individual sections. The one thing that I would make a comment on, I think the work of the Diversity Equity Committee was outstanding for the year. However, it just pointed to how large of a rock that is to roll with, right? So if you compare Curriculum Council's work over the last few years, we've driven that work to a point where there's great base of knowledge, there's broad buy-in, there's concepts that are in place and being utilized every day, and we're building from that. You know, and I wholly endorse, as a member of Curriculum Council, the further work around cultural competency, especially in that area of professional development. But it also shows the path for some of our, as we go through the blueprint process, when we bring up a new area, the diversity equity effort, although it built upon work that's long been in our district, this particular emphasis was new this year. It does point to, to make it work for us, to embed it in what we do, to make true change, is difficult work that has to be worked through and does take a particular amount of time. And I think the commitment to that is really important as we roll into the blueprint planning day coming up and then into our retreat work for the rest of the summer, you know. So I guess that's more of a statement kind of comment, I guess.
No, I agree.
It recognizes that this process works, but it has to be allowed to work, right? And we are committed to making it work that way, so.
And I was reminded that, again, tonight, too, for anybody, you know, there's some community members here that wouldn't have heard the tenure recommendations tonight in the earlier portion of the meeting. Every single one of those, as we noticed, had a comment about individuality and about respecting and teaching to the individuality of every single one of our students. So I think, again, this is an attitude, a disposition, a series of skill-building exercises for us and recognitions of where we can continue to build in that area. Unbelievable amount of work was done on that this year, and people moved to really exciting places. So this conversation is very active and we're very excited about it. So to see where this work can go, I think will just help everybody in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next area, mental health. This is Andrew.
Good evening. A slight change in direction, but a very serious topic as well. As we know, mental health is in the news all the time, and we're looking at how we can help our kids be healthier and handle the world in a healthy way. In our first year from the blueprint, we had a consulting group come in and they developed a report that was hundreds of pages long. And this year, we took that report with our steering committee, and I wanted to thank our steering committee specifically, that all of the work that they did this year, we had several people from all of the different buildings who broke up into smaller groups to study a couple of different topics. We looked at our family support center vision. And about ten years ago is when our family support center vision was actually conceived and thought about. And what it was thought about at that time was more of a mental health support center. And we went and we visited several mental health clinics in schools and family support centers that have mental health clinics as part of their programming. So we are moving in a little bit of a different direction with our family support center, and we will be having a person called our family navigator that will intervene with families and help families to navigate the system, get the help that they need, but we will have the help in the school. We will have a mental health professional at the middle school two full days a week so students can access their counseling during the school day. And we will have a mental health professional at the high school two full days a week for them also. So we're really, really excited about this model. It is a pilot model. We are contracting with community agencies and partnering with community agencies to look at this model, to see if this is what makes sense for Brighton. How many families will we be able to help access this service? So we're very, very excited about that. We also had a group of people who looked at those tier one and tier two interventions, something that the report talked about, was having more different types of interventions for all kids. Tier one is for all kids. What do we do to support everybody's social emotional health? What do we do in the classrooms? What do we do as in school-wide efforts to support not just those kids that are really struggling, but everybody and being very proactive? So something that we started looking at was a program called the Second Steps Curriculum. We've used it at Council Rock, French Road, and the middle school in a very limited basis this year. And next year, we are going to be widening that effort. We are able to hire two mental health full-time professionals, one at French Road, one at the middle school, and a point six at Council Rock. And they are going to be responsible for delivering those lessons in the classroom and for specifically working with tier two interventions with our kids who may have a little bit of behaviors that we need help with in terms of modifying and helping them to stay in the gen ed classroom. So it's a very specific skill set that we're looking for. We're not looking for a specific certification area. We're looking for people who have that ability to write behavior intervention plans, to work with teachers, to develop professional development, and to really support our kids at the very, at a very proactive level. We are also, something that came from the report was, how do we run our meetings and what are, we need to be, maybe we could be more efficient with the way our meetings run. And anybody who, any parents and all of the staff know that we all go to a lot of meetings and we're talking about kids all the time. And how can we do that more effectively and more efficiently and get, maybe get a little bit better or different results? And we've been doing some training. One of our counselors has been trained extensively on solution-based conversation. So really keeping us focused on solutions. We all know what the problems are. We talk about them over and over and over. What do we do? How do we refocus families and students and teachers on what our solutions might be and build off of what we already can do and make that more effective for our kids? So we have already trained several of our administrators. We have trained, we're going to be having extensive training this summer, going into next year. So we all start to talk in this, with the same kind of language and in our meetings, talking about our kids and talking to our families. One of the other things that they talked about in the report was the effectiveness of our groups. We know that we have lots of kids in a lot of groups, starting at Council Rock on through the high school. We pride ourselves that we have literally hundreds of kids who attend mental health groups each year and on a very regular basis. But one of the questions was, how do you measure the effectiveness of those groups? And we have looked at something called CoVitality. It is a measurement tool that students actually take. It takes ten minutes. It's done online. We are in conversations with this company, piloting something. So the kids going into group are going to take that, and then the kids when they exit the group, so that the counselors can measure the effectiveness. And it's questions about school. How do you feel about school? What are the stressors at school? There's, I think there's about fifty questions that take kids about ten minutes to answer. So we're really, really excited about that. And we also talked about our job descriptions and developing that mental health comprehensive plan that we are in the midst of doing. It's going to be an ongoing project. It's going to be tweaked every year. We will have a draft that we're going to go into next year. We've made some changes to our job descriptions. We're changing a little bit of what the social worker's focus might be versus the psychologist versus the school counselor. But it's a work in progress. We have to see what seems to work at each of the levels. And then all of this work, as we continue to do it, will go into the comprehensive plan, which, again, is a document, is always a work in progress. So it's amazing to me that what has happened from, well, the last two years and from September to now, this group of people have really put a lot of effort in, done a lot of visits, done a lot of piloting, gone to a lot of training, and we're really, really excited going into next year. Do you have any questions?
Carolyn, I guess, a comment I would make is, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, if you stop and think and look back at that report from the consultant firm, the consultant group brought to University of Buffalo, to where we are now, there is so much in there that I kind of look for, I think we look forward to more and more conversation as a group about these specifics now as we try to roll them out, to learn more about that. The one thought I had is the family navigator program. Do we envision that or is that envisioned to be, and I realize we have a long way to go. Does a pilot envision having some services delivered in schools, as you mentioned, and then also connections to community providers for other services?
Absolutely.
And then we'll kind of see how, you know, what needs there are and who can provide what, that kind of thing?
Yeah, and then the navigator can help the families connect with those people.
Put them in touch.
Also help them fill out the forms, whether it's insurance forms or Medicaid forms or all of those paperwork things that get people bogged down. And we've also talked about partnering with some private therapists who would be willing to come into the school. So to make it as easy as possible for people to access the services.
Fantastic. This is exciting work.
I do have to give a shout out to Marcia O'Brien. She has really helped us with this family navigator, and she's the one who has really done a lot of research to get this up and running.
We'll still be providing the support groups people have come to count on as well, though, correct? The support, the family support groups that take place in the evening?
Yes, the family support groups, and we already have some scheduled for next year. And we'll still continue to do parent workshops and all of those things, but we will probably go back to our previous model, which was working through my department, working through the teacher center to facilitate those with the PTSI.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. Appreciate that. Lou is back.
Yes, so two areas that, a focus that I helped facilitate this year. The first was to continue to study how to provide a school day that meets the development needs of students. And specifically, we were looking at start time. And our task this year was to outline our skeleton of what's starting school later, specifically our secondary schools later. So we worked on that. I have to say upfront, we didn't necessarily build consensus. In this recommendation that's in this presentation, there is disagreement over some of the timelines and some of the priorities. What had happened this year is, as we were building an implementation plan and trying to respond to some of the barriers and obstacles that we heard through the community survey and through what members had brought forth, there was general disagreement on what those, what those obstacles are and how those are being prioritized. So the superintendent helped guide our work in providing us some parameters to consider in the development of a potential implementation plan. So those are reflected in tonight's presentation. So our accomplishments is we studied a capital component to mitigate the concerns related to facility use and access to facilities if we were to push activities out in the evening hours. And then we also completed a transportation efficiency study to better get a handle on, you know, the vectors that are impacting transportation and what the cost drivers may be, or incremental cost drivers, rather. So our recommendations, again, outlined, and then I'll go into a little bit more detail, is one, to develop a capital plan that increases access to fields and gymnasiums, maximizing building aid to mitigate the impact on the local tax levy. To do that, because of all the work we've done on our site that's happening right now and the parking lot over the last couple of years, to be able to fully maximize that reimbursement from the state, our building aid would reset in 2023. So that doesn't mean that plans couldn't be developed and voted on, but there's a specific time where we would have to submit the building aid forms, and that's in February of 2023 where it would reset, or April of 2023. So we would just have to be very timely in preparing that paperwork. And then the second one is with 2019, 2020, as we prepare for full-day kindergarten, where we're already anticipating an increased demand for transportation, increasing our transportation fleet, that would be the time to go back and look at the transportation service and see if we can't make any changes that would mitigate that increased demand for resources or leverage those additional buses that we have to do for full-day K into the different start time, different start time options. So just to go in a little bit more detail with those recommendations and to highlight the parameters that the committee was working under. So the first one was to mitigate the negative impact on the use of facilities. So our recommendation to mitigate those real or perceived impacts on facilities would be to develop a capital plan that increases access, as previously stated, maximize the building aid, leveraging our capital reserves. So those are our savings accounts that we talked about in the reserve summary, leveraging a portion of those with the reimbursement from, in state aid, to have a cost-neutral capital project. And again, the incidental cost allowance for that to reset and to maximize the reimbursement does put a time parameter on it, you know, that that's what it is if we are to maximize that reimbursement. And then consider the adoption of a plan that commits to a set end time for schools. Our committee was very attracted to this when we, Nate Marion and I went to Clarence. That was their district's commitment, that we want school-related activities to be concluded by seven o'clock, and they have the facilities to be able to accomplish that. So that was an attractive goal that the committee would ask, you know, the district to further develop and see if we can develop a capital plan that would allow us to achieve that as well.
Lou, could I just ask you quickly, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Did they allow outside groups to use their facilities for seven after?
Yes.
Okay. So they're committing to their own school day, the district activity schedule, right? Okay, thanks.
So the second parameter that we were working under and developing an implementation, potential implementation plan for, was avoid pushing more activities to the morning than already occurs. That would obviously defeat the purpose of having a starter when we'd be obligating kids, if they wanted to participate in extracurriculars, and moving that to the morning. So part of the recommendation is whatever time we decided on with the AMA recommendation being eight-thirty or later, we want to maintain that activity period for after-school clubs activities, additional help, that was important, an important priority, again, for many of the committee members. Develop a capital plan that increases access to fields. So again, that would allow for not necessarily a compromise of what students can participate in. So if we had that capital plan and we had that time slot, we would still be able to offer the wider rate of clubs activities and interscholastic and VPA activities. So along those facility recommendations, this is something that I presented to the board at a previous meeting. This would be our recommendation. This is our current site plan right here. These are fields that are going to be in need of repair at some level anyway. So our recommendation would be to develop a capital plan that creates a multi-surface, multi-season field that would mitigate the demand for our stadium field and in the spring and the fall, fall seasons, would extend the useful life of our fields or at least access to our fields. This is just a model of what we saw from some of the investment that neighboring town has done, that has been able to achieve a lot of what we're talking about today. So this is an example that we've asked our landscape architects and engineers to be able to replicate on this site. What's the most that we could do? What's the cost for that? What's the timeline for that? Again, this portion of our facilities is in our multi-year capital plan anyway, so it's just a matter of what we're going to do to invest in that section. The other piece of it is gymnasiums, and as we evaluated, you know, some of those obstacles, we feel if we had another full-size gymnasium competition, eligible gymnasium, that we could offset a lot of that pressure for indoor sports. So the next parameter was avoid a costly change in transportation. So the next parameter was avoid a costly change in transportation costs, and again, this came back to let's reevaluate our efficiency, the transportation efficiency recommendations as we, um, further fi, as we finalize our, um, our plans for full-day kindergarten, where at this point, we've already committed to expanding our feet, our fleet because of the increased number of students that would be riding in, in the morning and, uh, in the afternoon. So just to give you a little bit of summary from the transportation efficiency study, that was one of the, um, requests of the committee was to have a second set of eyes, look at our transportation operation and make sure that we were, um, that we were looking at it accurately and that, you know, there was, you know, a bias-free analysis of this. So what we tasked our, our routing software, TransFinder, to do is give us a transportation efficiency study, and the only parameter that we gave them was the seven o'clock pickup time for our earliest learner. So that would be at, um, our K-five, um, the board said in the, in the previous meeting, we don't want our K-five kids picked up before seven o'clock in the morning. So that was the only parameter that they, that they had, and they said, all right, if we were to build your transportation system, this is what it, what it could look like. So the first thing that they did is they looked at, um, the use of our current fleet. And so they took a very statistical analysis and said, these are your potential riders, these are all the, the children that you route for, so all the potential riders, based on our monthly census, these are the actual expected riders. Now, we are obligated to provide a route for everyone. There's no necessarily opt-out provision, so that's something we tried to, to talk with the consultant, and they said, well, in his system, when he was a previous director, he used to route for a hundred and fifty kids, knowing or banking on the fact that only forty or fifty are gonna ride on them. We do that to the extent that we're comfortable, but there's several weeks of the year between sport seasons, probably this year more than any, we've had, um, concerns from our high school, middle school students about, uh, overcrowding of the buses, not having seats, so that's something we would really need to look at to be able to achieve the delta that they quantify here, saying that we could reduce our fleet by five buses if we only routed to the expected ridership. The other thing that we account for that I don't think the study necessarily accounts for is that our, um, open daycare system and our multiple-stop accommodations really forces us to keep seats on the bus for certain days. So in our system right now, uh, a family could conceivably have five different, um, AM pickup points and five different drop-off points in the afternoon, so they could have five different daycares in the morning, that is, they could have five different drop-offs. We accommodate split families, we accommodate, uh, really any situation. Even last week, we had more than fifty route changes for daycare changes. So we keep a very flexible, fluid system to be able to accommodate that. We can absolutely look at it, we just need to be prepared that it may require a change, a change in the level of service. So the options that were presented that were, um, that were cost-neutral and that, um, addressed at least the pickup time parameter that, that we gave the consultant, they came up with a scenario of Council Rock starting at seven forty, ending at two oh five, French Road, um, moving to a three-trip system, would bump French Road earlier in the day, and that would, um, you know, that would cause us to look at after-school activities instead of the before-school activi, activities. Again, this is just, we're not recommending this, this is just from a transportation, uh, consultant's look at our transportation system and where he, in this instance, uh, would put our bell times to maximize the, or to improve efficiency. So French Road, eight-twenty to two-fifty, and then high school, middle school, um, nine o'clock to four o'clock, and then you see the length of the school day there, there. He also then looked at the number of runs under this option and where the buses that are allocated right now. So this option shows that we have the opportunity to free up ten buses that could be used for private or parochial, um, or that can be, uh, savings. I don't necessarily know how much of that ten needs to be allocated for private and parochial because they're, there's a different structure than we have right now, so I can't fairly say that that's a, we can save ten buses at seventy thousand apiece. I have to say that minimally, this is cost-neutral, and we'd have to see how many of those would have to be earmarked for, uh, for private and parochials. So the second option that the consultant came up with is, um, is a little bit different. So it shows a seven forty, uh, start time again, and eight-ten start time for French Road, and an eight forty start time. Uh, we shared some of the survey results, so he wanted to try to get us something before nine o'clock. Um, this would increase, uh, reduce, rather, the ride times, so it would put more buses out in the road in a shorter period of time. So you see the delta in this instance is, um, is zero in the morning and it's nine in the, in the afternoon. So thirty-four buses, we have thirty-eight that are riding in the morning right now, so depending on where our private and parochials fall in this schedule, um, is likely to be cost-neutral as well, and it's likely to be cost-neutral in the afternoon, um, or a potential, potential savings, even if we, uh, condense the ride times. But again, both of these are, um, engineering it, so it's a three-trip system that would have Council Rock, French Road, and then the high school, middle school to achieve that later start time in the, uh, for the secondary level. So then the, uh, other recommendations, um, or I guess to elaborate on the recommendations, the implementation of full-day K creates a financial need to reevaluate these services. So what we're proposing is let's study what those, um, what those services are, if we can really take advantage of any of these efficiencies, what would be the consequences, what would be the community feedback for that? That's something that I think we can continue to work on. Um, I think it's incumbent on us to work on that through the eighteen, nineteen school year to begin those discussions in the nineteen, twenty school year, uh, as the recommendation says on, on that first slide. And really, we have to bet that, and transportation is a very sensitive topic for some, for many families, so we really need to understand what the changes in that service, what the reaction, uh, what the reaction would be to that. Any questions on, on the first safety, security, wellness topic? So then the second one, what we've been working on is providing additional security measures for after-school activities, uh, while maintaining an open and welcoming environment. So what we've accomplished this year is we've conducted, um, safeties, uh, we've conducted safety, security procedures, I guess that's the wrong word. Uh, we reviewed them, evaluated them, that conducted them, uh, with our first responders, looked at what we're doing, had a roundtable discussion about what our after-school and evening activities look like. Uh, we assessed the facility and the staffing gap analysis, and we're recommending at this point an investment in upgrading our communication system. So that's obviously the first thing. If somebody sees something that need to alert a crowd that's not used to our emergency response procedures, how are we gonna notify them timely and how are we gonna give them clear, specific instruction on what to do to mitigate the risks that are present in the situation that's identified? To do that and to mitigate the risks of something happening and to be able to, you know, say something if they see something faster is to add additional staff at, um, at the doors in the, in the evening hours. So what we're proposing to do is lock down door number one at the high school during the evening hours, man door number twenty, which is the door by the tennis courts, so at least we have eyes on who's coming and going from the evening activities. We're reconciling who's coming into the building with the scheduled and approved activities are. Um, same thing for the middle school. So we would propose, uh, dedicating an after-school, uh, security, uh, guard to our middle school, again, to, to look at and have eyes on what's happening in the evening hours, make sure that people are in the building, are supposed to be in the building, have access to, to what they're doing in, in the building. And then we would still maintain the floater system for French Road and Council Rock and triage that allocation of resources based on the activities in that building. The Twelve Corners campus generally is our highest volume of activity, so that's what we're proposing to, uh, invest in, uh, in resources quicker. Any questions with that?
Mine of work.
Lou. Yeah, Lou, quickly on the, because Safety Committee has spent a lot of time over the last couple of years talking about evening, so I'm, I'm happy and appreciative and supportive of the efforts to, to bolster e, evening activities. And to be clear to folks, when we have a scheduled athletic contest, play, those security, additions, those nights are automatic anyway. We have plans around having more people at those events, correct?
Yes.
So this is...
So the supervision of those events is, um, you know, we're, we're always looking at that, and we're always evaluating the appropriateness of, of the chaperones, and who's doing what, what are the posts that are there? Nate Merritt and Mike Leener work very closely with John McCabe and our, uh, supervisor, chaperone supervisors in that regard. This is the rest of the building.
The every night, so we've talked about it forever, staff in there, people come and go, some smaller community groups, so...
And when we do have those large events, does everyone know what to do? Is there visuals? Is the PA, you know, what's the messaging? What's, who has access to even make a PA announcement in the evening? Those are all the questions that we were asking as we were kind of doing that, that gap analysis from a communication standpoint and from a access standpoint.
And on the, uh, start time work this, uh, last two years with the committee, I guess, a few things that I think we look to see, uh, further, uh, discussion about. I think it's been clear through the work that the entirety of our transportation area, and, and we've done a tremendous amount of work this year with consultant, you, all of our people. I think we really have to, as part of the blueprint process, really decide and discuss as a group, how, what level of review we want to put transportation under. And I think we could look toward full-day K, we could look for, uh, toward starting our secondary kids later, but the entirety of that transportation, really, we, we discovered every time we talk about this in other aspects of how we do our business too, and we've got to take a look at that. Group stops, the daycare policy, the private parochials and how many we do, uh, just the overall cost of our transportation. You know, one of the things about the study, Lou points out, the assumptions that the group made in the study, I, I have some questions about, truthfully, as far as, from a customer service standpoint, can we really bank on X amount of kids not riding a bus absent us recording contracts or something like that, you know?
Which we can't really do.
Which we really can't do. So I think we really need to discuss as a group, part of the planning, on, uh, do we want to undertake, what level we want to undertake that transportation issue to, to try to, because we have discussed it every year in some fashion.
Every, every single year.
Right, and we know it, and in this bus driver shortages is getting worse, uh, so it's not gonna get less expensive as a service, you know? That's one area that I think is, we want to make sure we identify, as we move the entirety of that discussion into the blueprint discussion further, so. Anything further? Anybody on that Lou stuff?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, a few other items of business this evening to take care of. We have bids. I'm gonna suggest that bids number, item, agenda number ten, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. Uh, let's have a motion to approve those collectively if we could, and I'll claim.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Martha. You know, normally we're sticklers for, uh, uh, each bid being separate. These are all group bids through the Bosie's Purchasing Service, they've all been vetted, we have the documentation for supplies of, in this case, school lunch items and also athletic supplies and whatnot, so that's why I'm recommending, if that's okay with everybody. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, our next item this evening is the, uh, a motion, please, to authorize, uh, me on behalf, as Board of Education President, to enter into an amended employment contract on behalf of the board with Dr. McGowan.
So moved. Second.
Uh, moved by, uh, Julene and seconded by, uh, Martha, I think.
Yep.
And as we talked about, as we have discussed, uh, a couple of occasions in executive session, we've completed an evaluation of Kevin's work for this year, and we've also, uh, recommended, uh, and this, what this resolution does is authorize me to move forward and complete with our attorneys and Kevin and his representation, uh, an amended contract with few minor adjustments in terms of some of his cafeteria benefit things, uh, but we have rated him again this year for the ninth straight year, highly effective in his performance, and in regards to all of that conversation, uh, the recommendation is to replace his contract with a new five-year contract, which is the maximum allowed under New York State law. Uh, our appreciation of him as a leader is upsta, we, it couldn't be stronger, and his work in this district and his work in this community is among the best in the state and along, in the country, so, uh, that is what this resolution allows us to move forward with, so.
So let me just add, we are very lucky, certainly as our superintendent, and we're very excited to present you with a five-year contract.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your kind words. It is nothing, uh, less than an incredible honor, and we have to continue to work with kids and families in this district and with all of you, so thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we, you say very kind things about me, but I couldn't work with a better team, both in all of you, but in the people who are here tonight, and our entire leadership team and our staff, Judy Wegman, everybody that we work with as partners, we're very, very fortunate in it, so thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, item number twelve, uh, motion, please, to authorize Kevin to enter into an amended employment contract with Dr. Baker.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. And again, this is, uh, similarly, Debbie's contract is up for adjustment, and that authorizes Kevin to go ahead and serve direct supervisor to do that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion then now for authorization of Dr. McGowan to enter into an amended employment contract with Lou Alimo as our Assistant Superintendent for Administration.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Julene, seconded by Martha, and again, the same rationale and reasoning, uh, regarding the previous, uh, item with Dr. Baker. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I, I would just comment again to that, good fortune of working with incredible people, Debbie, Lou, and Carolyn are cabinet, along with our entire leadership team, are experts in their field, uh, Debbie and, and Lou, Carolyn, certainly the work that they do, again, locally, but also recognized everywhere for, uh, their expertise, their talent, their time, and their commitment that they give to our kids, so I'm, uh, couldn't be more blessed.
Absolutely, and you know, I, it's important, I think, for us to message to the community, uh, our appreciation of the board, certainly for Lou and Debbie and our entire leadership team. You, all you need to do is spend a little bit of time looking at almost any other school district, and you realize, one of the great things about Brighton is we benefit greatly by the dedication, devotion, and longevity of outstanding leaders. And we talked about our teaching staff earlier and having great people in front of kids in every classroom, but really, our assistant principals, our principals, our directors, uh, all of our buildings and grounds, leadership, uh, custodial, su, food service, we are in such a great position compared to many other places that constantly turn over folks, and it's a great place to be, and we are very appreciative of everyone's dedication, devotion to the work, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Al.
Uh, motion, please, for approval of construction contracts under our improvement plan with regard to a middle school door replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Martha and seconded by Larry. I don't think we need anything further on this, it's explanatory and under, underway, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the next item, we mentioned earlier about most of our cooperative bids are purchased under the Cooperative Bid System Monroe Two Orleans Bosie's. So this is a motion, please, to approve, uh, the purchasing agent from Monroe Two Orleans Bosie's to enter into any and all cooperative bidding ventures conducted and approved by the board during the 2018, 2019 school year.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Andrea. Anything further on that? Hey, I'm just picking, okay? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's what happens at the last meeting of the year, right?
That's right.
So, we're okay. Give you some time off, so hang in there. Um, next up, we have approval of first read of four different policies, and again, first read means just that, their first read, they'll go through further open period of comment and come back to us for second read and at that point approval. So, uh, let me, let go to, first of all, the... I just wanna, I have, I have policies that I put notes on, so let me pull my other ones out, I'm gonna use copies of. First up, a motion, please, for approval, policy seven-two-four-two, first read, students on limited disclosure of student directory information.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Martha. Uh, the revision in this policy is minor, it's on page three, and it's really to align with the next policy that we're gonna ask for the first read of approval on, which has to do with law changes required by the Every Student Succeeds Act. So there are numerically, we're dealing with them properly, but this is a result of forty-three, so that's the reason for that. Anything further, question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, then, to approve first read, changes to policy seven-two-four-three, students, military recruiters, and institu, institutions of higher education.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Martha. And again, this is extensively revised, as you know, if you've looked through it, uh, to reflect the law changes required by the Every Student Succeeds Act around information available and dealings with military recruiters and, and institutions of higher education. So, all by law. Anything further, question, comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion, please, for first read of policy seven-five-one-two, students and student physicals.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Martha. And this is again, updated to reflect revised law governing the timing of mandated health exams as well as screenings around vision, hearing, and scoliosis. And the corrections also are being made because when this policy, this has happened with a number of our policies, Jill is cleaning them up, when we migrated to the new website, some of the formatting of the policies over time, so there's some corrections in there for, clearly formatting also. Anything further from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the final policy, first read for this evening, policy 6212, personnel certification and qualifications. Motion please.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. This is revised due to the online verification of certification status that's now required through the Teach Online Services instead of printed certificates for both current and potential employees per new New York State Education Department guidelines and rules. Anything further on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is the time of year for a lot of first-read policy, we'll have some more over the summer. Our consent agenda this evening, may we have a motion please to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julianne, seconded by Larry. Couple of quick items this evening under the consent agenda, I just want to make note, this includes approval of our 2018, 2019 Board of Education meeting dates, so we'll have those posted shortly, and it also approves the 2018, 2019 Board of Education Reorganization meeting to be held July 10th, Tuesday, July 10th at 9:00 a.m. That'll be the next time that we meet in session. All in favor of the consent agenda, please?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just have one question.
No, that's a... No, they did, okay.
Actually, Dr. Leener, I have a question about the gift.
I'm going to give you a second.
Okay, never mind. I'll ask a question.
Gift's our supper tonight.
Thanks.
And then approval of a gift, please. We have a motion to approve the gift from the Friends of the Arts in Brighton, in the amount of $490 in honor of retiring teachers Laura Baldwin, Cheryl Guth, and Beth Rettner.
So moved. Second.
Which leads me to my question.
Okay.
I don't know if Dr. Leener knows for sure, this is the, this is the memo received from Fab, but they retired last year, so I don't know if it's in honor of Lois Mahalco or if...
There's a current campaign going on for Lois Mahalco.
Great.
This is...
So they may have run the campaign.
This campaign was recognition of last year's retirees.
I just want to double check. It's very generous.
Not last year's memo used again.
No, it's great.
Right, right.
Memo for this year's campaign, campaign.
We understand. Thank you for the clarification. Do we have a motion?
It's crystal.
We did.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any other further items of business this evening, Dr. McGowan?
No.
Much as I hate to do this, I ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss employment of a particular individual, please.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
Moved by Martha, seconded by Martha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate you hanging in. We are adjourned.
Did you just say executive session? We did, right?